Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for July 17, 2017. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Bevier.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Berry and Hoffman are excused.
Thank you. Would you please stand as you are able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first part of our meeting is always set aside for citizens' comments. We have three folks who've signed up this evening, so I will call your name and ask you to come to the podium, please, and identify yourself along with your address and also your issue. We'll start with Debbie Leahy, and then Jeannie Tesoro, and then Bob Seibert.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Leahy. I live in Summer Lakes at 30W-030 Hurlingham Court. My husband and I have lived there since 1982. Last year I was here and I encouraged the city council to adopt a zero tolerance policy against the use of illegal fireworks, as other communities have done with positive results. The measures they implemented included increased fines, aggressive enforcement, and community outreach. Unfortunately, the problem in Warrenville persists. I called the police three times this year. The first time, a very nice professional officer explained to me that he had to witness the person using fireworks before he could issue a citation. The second time, I waited outside for an hour and nobody showed up. The third time, an officer suggested I would need to put my name on a complaint and take a day off of work to go to court. I said I was willing to do that, but I believe his intent was to discourage me from complaining. In 2015, the Warrenville Police issued two citations for illegal possession of fireworks. In 2016, they issued one citation for one or more juveniles. As of July 10, they issued zero citations for 2017. I don't understand why the police issue so few citations when a problem is so prevalent. Violators are not hard to find. People don't typically set off just one or two fireworks and stop. They have a stash of fireworks. They set them off intermittently for over an extended period. The culprits are essentially jumping up and down, waving their arms, screaming, "Here I am." I stood on a sidewalk and watched a courtyard with several people setting off massive fireworks. This went on for at least an hour. My husband suffers from end-stage renal disease. He works full-time and goes to dialysis three nights a week. He gets up at 4:00 in the morning and doesn't get home until 9:30 in the evening on days where he has treatment. He couldn't get proper rest from the constant noise. My dog was petrified. She panted heavily, trembled, hid behind the couch, and refused to go outside. Medicating her didn't help. It tore me apart to see her so traumatized. I'm not the only one concerned about the problem. I was at Walgreens on Route 59 and overheard two cashiers, both Warrenville residents, complaining to each other about how bad the fireworks have gotten. I was at Target on Deal Road. The couple in line before me were complaining to the clerk about the fireworks. They live in the River Oaks subdivision. I have a letter from the Summer Lakes Homeowners Association encouraging the city council to act. They've been flooded with complaints from residents. And in your handouts is a photo sheet that shows the fireworks going off in Mulberry Court just before and just after a police car drove through the court, as well as Facebook postings from last year when a resident joked about starting a fire and a photo of her fireworks stash. I've also included some information on Joliet's efforts to combat this problem. That includes stepped-up enforcement resulting in 52 citations and $26,000 in fines. I'd like to know how the city plans to address this in 2018 because the status quo just isn't working. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jeannie Tesoro. I also live in Summer Lakes at 30W-146 Concord Court, and I have lived in Warrenville since 1984. I, too, want to discuss the matter of fireworks. According to Illinois law, the only fireworks that are legal to discharge in Illinois are poppers, sparklers, and gun caps. What was going off by my house were quarter sticks. This is ordinance. This isn't even a firework. It isn't even classified as a firework. These booms went on for days. My neighbors have called the police and were told, "We cannot do anything unless we have an exact address." One of my neighbors went over, got the exact address, observed people throwing these quarter sticks, and I believe she knows exactly what she's talking about because she is a veteran of the U.S. Army and trained with quarter sticks, going through basic training. So she recognized them. I am very distressed that the instruction for the citizens is that you need to go out and give me the exact address. Couple of years ago, I had a neighbor who was working on his car, revving the motor so loud that we could not converse in our own house. After three or four hours, I went over to ask him to stop. He told me he wasn't going to, at which point I called 911. 911 instructed me that I should never, ever approach anybody with a problem like that, that I should always call the police, and never, ever go out and put myself in, quote, "harm's way." Now, why is it harm's way if somebody is working on his car and being rude, but it's not harm's way to go by people who are drinking? And they were, I could hear them, they were three houses away, getting increasingly louder and obviously drunk, throwing ordinance. This is absurd, and I would like to know, why is Warrenville not subject to the laws of the state of Illinois? I seriously expect an answer to that. Furthermore, in the park by, behind Johnson School, there was a fireworks display set up by individuals that went off and was timed to go off just at the end of the program at Cerny Park. So they knew that they were going to be out of there before the cops were going to be available to have the manpower to go do anything. This is ridiculous. The people doing the fireworks are getting more and more brazen with each passing year. It's only a matter of time before somebody is going to be hurt, and unfortunately, it probably won't be one of the ones throwing the fireworks. I'm very disappointed in my city for taking such a cavalier attitude to this, and I really expect better from you people.
Good day.
Thank you.
Bob?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Sometimes we have to look to the past to plan for the future. This document is an April 15, 1991, public hearing on the amended area in TIF 1. The consultant at this public hearing was Gene Norbert. He's associated with the consulting firm from St. Louis. He was responsible to answer questions that the citizens had. One question from Frank Bernard, whom most of you know. Frank was one of the real organizers of the City of Warrenville, was on the original Plan Commission, was chairman of the Plan Commission, and then went to DuPage County Plan Commission. His wife was the first clerk and extended for over 20-some years in running the city when no one was here. The question that Mr. Bernard asked, "What is the cost to me as a property owner?" Mr. Norbert, "The cost to you as a property owner, sir?" Mr. Bernard, "Sure, the cost to me. Am I not funding this as a taxpayer?" Mr. Norbert, "The growth in taxes, the assessed value, and the taxes that are applied to the growth and the assessed value in any TIF area are put back in the TIF area. They do not go to the taxing districts that would otherwise receive them," if that answers your question. Mr. Bernard, "Well, it really doesn't answer my question, because I'm kind of talking in hard dollars. If my tax bill is $2,000 a year or $4,000 a year, would the creation of this TIF district result in my taxes being another 10% over the next 10 years, 20% over the next 10 years? You know all the research that you've done. You must have some historic background you could apply to this." Mr. Norbert, "The majority of TIF areas that we've worked on are in the stages very similar to this one, where there is a potential to do a redevelopment project of significant size, but the dollars and cents of those particular projects and how much they cost and what their impacts might or might not be on taxpayers is unknown now." Mr. Bernard, "So you don't know?" Mr. Norbert, "Correct. I believe that the taxpayers deserve a better answer than 'I don't know,' especially since Mr. Norbert's firm from St. Louis, their claim to fame is that they wrote the TIF statute for the state of Illinois." Yet, Mr. Norbert didn't know.
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to go back to the fireworks question for just a moment and ask Chief Toronto to make some remarks on that, please. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. As frustrating as the residents may be with that, we're just as frustrated, and if I can just have a moment or two, we'll go over a few things. Yes, it is illegal to have fireworks in the state of Illinois and to discharge them. However, it makes it extremely difficult for us to monitor the availability of fireworks within the state when every state that surrounds us sells them legally. I contacted the state police and asked them because I was aware of a program years ago where they would have unmarked state police cars and, with state troopers in plainclothes, go into these places that were across the state border and basically look at these firework retail outlets, look for the Illinois license plates that were in the parking lot, follow them back into the state, stop them, and then look for contraband. I was informed that these businesses that were out of state banded together and filed a lawsuit against the Illinois State Police and the Illinois Department of Revenue for basically infringing on their right to do illegal business within their state, and they prevailed. So their practice has stopped. As frustrating as this is, it's frustrating to us, but this, and I'm not shirking my responsibility or trying to pass the buck down the ladder or down the line, this goes on in every community, whether it's here or Naperville or West Chicago or Winfield or Wheaton, there are fireworks going on. We can adopt a zero tolerance policy. I'm looking forward, or I'm looking into presenting something that would use our adjudication process and would carry a stiff penalty. However, zero tolerance programs usually tend to not get you the results that you want, and I can tell you this, and I would be disingenuous if I said anything else. No matter what we do, it will never eliminate this completely, just as you will never eliminate people going over the speed limit, not using their seatbelt, using their hands or their phone to text and what have you when you're driving. This is a matter of personal responsibility, and until people stop using these things because it's just a dangerous, irresponsible thing to do, we will do our best, and I'm looking into things for next year, and that may very well include canceling all days off, hiring back people at a holiday rate to go out and do enforcement, which will increase, increase the cost, and we will look at putting together something where we can take this through the city's adjudication process, and I'll present it to the council at a meeting in the future. But, but I would, I would just say this, whether you have a zero tolerance policy towards drugs, towards people that commit traffic violations and what have you, it usually doesn't get you the results that you want. I think something has to be done on a statewide level, and that's whether people would look at contacting their state representatives and looking at some type of legislation that would prohibit these people that, that have these retail establishments in other cities, other states to sell them to Illinois residents. I mean, if there are certain things, Morton Grove, Highland Park, what have you, they've done things with fire, or, excuse me, firearms and ammunition and, and high-capacity magazines. I don't know why they couldn't do this with explosive compounds, but, you know, that'd be, that'd be something, something to look into. But other than that, to your homeowners associations, quite honestly, because the way the law is enforced right now, we, we go on a city ordinance, but for an arrest to be made, the officer has to witness it, or a person has to appear as a complaining witness and be willing to appear in court and testify to the fact that they witnessed the violation and the officer took action. I mean, that's, that's the law. It's not something I made up, and it's certainly not something that we say to discourage people from signing and complaining, going to court. We just want to let them know that in the event that they don't appear in court, the case will be dismissed. But I will have something forthcoming, and we can look at that, and the council can make a decision and see if they'd want to implement that, and then we'll go forward.
Okay, so we'll have a discussion at some committee meeting, probably?
That's correct.
A public safety committee?
I'm looking probably, it'll be September, October, probably November.
Okay, good. All right, so everyone's invited back. We'll talk about it publicly and see what we can and can't do. Thank you, Chief. Let's move on to official and staff comments then for this evening, starting with the mayor. I have a number of things. First of all, last week, I went on my way to thank all of the volunteers that made our Fourth of July celebration, the legal one, very, very successful yet again. I just want to emphasize that that is entirely a volunteer operation that's supported by RPD and by our emergency management folks in the Park District, but these volunteers don't just get together on July 3 and decide what they're going to do on the 4th or the 2nd. They work year-round. They meet monthly all year long for that to work as well as it does, and you know it works well because we've had very few problems, no arrests, no problems at all. It is a great celebration. I want to thank everyone who had anything to do with that, Colin Wilkie, who's in charge of that operation, and this parade was as nice as I've ever seen that we've had, so it's good to have that also. So thank you for everyone who had something to do with that celebration. Yesterday, the library had the grand opening for their newest incarnation. Very, very impressive. If you have not been to the library to see what they've been able to do with that building for a little town like Warrenville, that is a beautiful, beautiful operation. They really have brought that into the 21st century. They're right on the cutting edge of how libraries have to be now. The physical building is absolutely fabulous. It's very, very well done. So do stop into the library and see what's happening over there. Great operation. Your tax money very well used. We have a couple of other things, Chief, I'd like you to talk about. National Night Out is coming up August 1. We also have our neighborhood roll calls, so maybe give folks an idea of what's going on there.
Sure. Our neighborhood roll calls have been very well attended this year. I think we have two more left. If you're interested in seeing when those dates and time are, and they're, of course, always dependent on the weather, take a look at the website and you'll be able to see on the Facebook page when our neighborhood roll calls will be presented. National Night Out will be August 2, which will be at Cerny Park. We have free food and entertainment for the kids, excuse me, August 1, I'm sorry, August 1 at Cerny Park, and it will start at 6:00 PM, run until 9:00 PM. It's usually very well attended. Last year, we had over 1,400 people attend, and it's a great family event. I think the kids will get a kick out of it, so if you have come in the past, please come again. If you haven't, give it a try. Tell your neighbors about it, and, and come on down, and I think you'll be very pleased.
Thank you, Chief. Another thing I would like to call your attention to is Warrenville and Bloom recently celebrated their 10th anniversary of being in town and the beautification efforts that they have put forward for the town. If you notice the flowers on the bridges and the hanging baskets and the front yards that have the signs, this is the result of, again, a group of volunteers who received no compensation for this other than the satisfaction of seeing their community a more beautiful place. Enjoy it, please. When you're driving around, notice the beauty that's there. Notice the beautiful landscaping that the city has along Butterfield Road and the improvements we've made there. Every season, it looks a little bit different, and it's really, really nice. So take the time to look around this summer. There are a lot of people that work very hard to make Warrenville a more beautiful place. The Warrenville Mayor's Fitness Challenge has gone into the past. The sixth annual is over. We've ordered the t-shirts. We've got the trophies on the way also. We'll let you know when those are available. We have our photo session. For those that completed the challenge this year, coming up, we will make sure that announcement gets out for everyone so that you can be here for that. A lot of fun. And lastly, if you've ever wondered about things coming up in town and you'd like to be on the end to notice something, right, when it's just being discussed, this Thursday night, the 20th, at our Plan Commission meeting, there are several large projects that are going to be discussed, and presentations will be made. Some very exciting things happening in Warrenville. You can come. You can see that firsthand. You can ask questions. You can find out the details of these projects and their impacts going forward on the community. So a lot of times, the Plan Commission is quiet. There are only maybe a few neighborhood issues. This is a meeting that has some issues that have a wide-ranging impact on the community, so we're pretty excited about them. Thursday night, right here in this room, 7:00 PM, some very big issues going to be discussed. So come on in and see how government really works at the local level. And that's all I have for this evening. Clerk?
Good day.
Okay, Alderman?
Good day.
Alderman Widener?
Yes, I appreciate the chief's comment on the topic of fireworks, and I think the situation needs to be addressed seriously. I hope that it's on a public safety meeting and that we develop some sort of action plan. I really believe, like gang activity, fireworks usage is, will be as big of a problem as the community allows it to be. You know, there's not going to be one solution. There's going to be, I think, all of us working together to kind of put sunlight on this, on this problem in order to reduce the amount. I don't think it'll ever go away. I agree with the chief with that, but we, I think we can significantly alter it if we use a lot of different means. You know, we haven't even talked about publicity and posters and different community actions that can take place with residents and homeowners associations becoming involved in this, and I just hope, you know, with a full year ahead of us that we can approach this and work on, you know, not a total solution, but a reduction in a no tolerance, a strict no tolerance policy, and one that is cost-effective so that if we do employ more police, the fines will be such that it may cover those overtime costs and so forth, or in some way, you know, seriously punish the offenders who are so brazen as to utilize the fireworks. And I just think, too, that a successful TIF district always increases homeowners' values within the, within the district, and I think there's probably a ripple effect of a successful TIF district affecting homeowner prices in the town itself by making the town more attractive and more shopper-friendly, and all the different things that a successful TIF has brought Warrenville has a ripple effect in making our home values improve. And when our home values improve, a certain amount of taxing percentage is going to increase because there'll be a subsequent increase in our taxes as our home values improve. So I just wanted to mention that we've had several successful TIF districts, and I'm confident that the ones that we have going now will be successful for the residents as well as the businesses and commercial interests that we want to attract to our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And, excuse me, I want to go back to the treasurer, sir. I'm sorry, I missed you tonight. I'm got in a hurry here. Larry, anything to add?
Just want to let everybody know that about a week and a half ago, the state did pass a budget after a two-year hiatus and, and that the local government effect is still being worked out, and as soon as everything is known, it will be known to all the citizens in Warrenville.
Thank you. Any other Alderman comments? Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. I wanted to remind everybody that the library's concerts on the Commons have started up. I believe last week's meeting, concert on Wednesday was canceled because of the inclement weather, but on Wednesday nights at 7:00, you can come on out here to the beautiful Bob Walters Commons, the park right next to City Hall and the library, and there's going to be live music, and it's going to be a lot of fun all summer long, Wednesday nights. That's supported by the Hotel Motel Grant Program, and it's always a great time. There's quite a variety of musical groups, and it's a wonderful service that the library is, is helping to run, and the city is helping to fund, and I know it's going to be a fun summer. Thank you.
Yeah, it's always amazing when you come to these gatherings and you think, well... Yeah, it's always amazing when you come to these gatherings and you think, well, local musicians, how good can they be? And then you come and you say, wow, these folks are really excellent, and you get to see them live, you get to see them with a group of your neighbors, and these events are always well-attended, so they are a lot of fun, and they are free, absolutely free to you. So take advantage of that right here in town. You don't have to go out of town to be amused in a very positive way and have an enjoyable evening. Thank you, alderman. Anyone else? City administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight, thank you.
Thank you, and city attorney?
I have nothing tonight, thank you, mayor.
Very good. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening then. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda for the July 17, 2017, city council regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the agenda as presented? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple sets of minutes that need approval also. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the June 19, 2017, city council regular meeting, and to approve the minutes of the July 10, 2017, Finance and Public Safety Committee of the whole regular meeting.
Second.
Motion is second by Alderman Wilson, discussion of those minutes. Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Consent agenda for this evening reads as follows. Item 6A, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-39, amending city code Title III, Chapter II, to decrease the number of Class A2 liquor licenses from 10 to 9. B, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-40, approving future rezoning from R1 to R4 of the property located on Patterman Road, PIN number 04-34-105-0-022 upon annexation. C, accept staff recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-41, annexing the property located on Patterman Road, PIN number 04-34-105-022 to the city of Warrenville. D, accept Plan Commission recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-42, approving site-specific amendments and exceptions for illuminated wall signage at Chui's Restaurant, 28244 Deal Road, Warrenville, Illinois. E, accept stormwater and floodplain oversight committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-43, approving a variance from Section 15-72.B of the DuPage County, countywide stormwater and floodplain ordinance to allow proposed site runoff to drain unrestricted to the adjacent downstream property without detention and subject to Duke, either "aye," working with the ownership and developer of the adjacent Kleinman property to provide required detention volume, or double "aye," paying the city code required fee in lieu of detention within one year of city council approval of this ordinance. F, accept Finance and Public Safety Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-44, approving the disposal of city-owned property through an auction conducted by Obenoff Auction Services Incorporated. G, accept Finance and Public Safety Committee recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance 02017-45, approving the disposal of city-owned property through donation to working bikes. H, accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's recommendation and pass resolution R2017-26, approving the public improvements associated with the Lausen Accounting Project, reduce the letter of credit, and place the project into the two-year maintenance period. I, accept Finance and Public Safety Committee recommendation and approve the reimbursement request from the Warrenville Historical Society for the director and curator position from the Hotel Motel Fund in FY 2018 in the amount of $5,711.25, and deny the request from the Warrenville Historical Society for reimbursement of $2,112 for the FY 2016 walking tour due to noncompliance with the Hotel Motel Tax Grant Program requirements. J, accept Finance and Public Safety Committee recommendation and approve a request from Fundways of Illinois for a carnival permit during the 2017 Summer Days Event on August 4th and 5th, subject to compliance with all the conditions and requirements set by city staff in a memo dated July 10, 2017. K, receive and file minutes of Environmental Advisory Commission regular meeting held on April 18, 2017. L, receive and file minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission regular meeting held on May 23, 2017. M, receive and file minutes of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission regular meeting held on June 14, 2017. N, receive and file approved minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Stormwater Management and Floodplain Oversight Committee meeting held on June 22, 2017. O, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting held on July 6, 2017. P, receive and file report of invoices paid up to July 12, 2017 in the amount of $243,049.4 and 4 cents. Q, authorized expenditures or invoices due honor before August 7, 2017 in the amount And R, receive and file report of debit card expenditures for the month of May 2017 in the amount of $8,901.96. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bromel.
Second.
Motion is second by Alderman Wilson. Mayor of Roll Call, please.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Amelie. Consent agenda is approved for this evening. We have nothing under regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business, nothing under new business, no closed session, no closed session. We need a motion then to adjourn. Alderman Widener?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we adjourn. Thank you for your attention this evening.